Who now live within the Cessnock Local Government area. We now stand for the council prayer, councillor Dunn.
Most gracious God, we pray to the council of the city of Cessnock, its members and officers, direct their work and influence their decisions to the advancement of your glory and to the safety and wellness of this city, so that peace and happiness, truth and justice and sound development may be established among us through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
A leave of absence has been granted for councillor Jackson and there are no other apologies. The confirmation of the previous minutes. Moving that way councillor Sander, seconded councillor Moores. All those in favour? G unanimous? Disclosures of interest? No disclosures of interest? There are no petitions that I'm aware of? Public address? First report is in regards to PE 70 2022 and I'll call Mr Heath Bonifant, who is speaking against the recommendation. Please come forward. Thank you. Mr Bonifant, you have three minutes.
Thank you everybody for the opportunity to address you in relation to this matter. As has been already said, my name's Heath Bonifant, I'm the director of the applicant. And I want to address you about this DA which is of course not a small DA. We're talking about over 300 lots being added to Ward B. We're talking about over six and a half million dollars in contributions to council. We're talking about over 2.2 million dollars in contributions to local state infrastructure. And we're talking about offers that I've made in addition to the mandatory contributions, which is that I offered to upgrade or contribute to the upgrading of the Maitland Road, Old Maitland Road intersection, which I know for this council is an important topic. So that's the DA. I accept if you've read the council report, you've probably already formed the view that this applicant doesn't know what they're doing. They're very slow, we should give them no leniency. And if the only information I had was the council report, I would form the exact same view. There is however, information that is not contained in the council report and I thank you for the opportunity to raise those matters in my three minute speech. I will deal with the outstanding matters that council have in the council report. There's three categories. The first is matters which are really not outstanding because council advised they could be dealt with by consent conditions. So they're not outstanding, they really shouldn't have been in the report. The second category are matters which were outstanding when the report was drafted, but have since been resolved. And the third category, there's two matters which won't be resolved until February of next year. So if I can start with the matters that won't be resolved until February of next year. The most important of those relates to the issue of the satisfactory arrangements that needs to be complied with under the Act. And to obtain that, we needed a, an SVPA to be entered into. This SVPA is linked to Transport for New South Wales because we had proposed to make contributions in addition to the mandatory contributions to upgrade the Old Maitland Road, Maitland Road intersection. And the Department of Planning said if we were going to do that, the SVPA should reflect that. So the SVPA was waiting on a contribution amount from us to upgrade the intersection. And of course, we couldn't propose that ourselves because it's a state intersection. We needed Transport for New South Wales concurrents. So why do we not have it after 12 months? I, is that, what does that mean?
We have councillor Hawkins is moving for an further one minute extension, seconded by councillor Sander. Put the motion, all those in favour? Councillors Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Jurd and Savell, those against councillor Olson, declared carried. You have one further minute.
Okay, the timeline is on the 19th of October 2021, we lodged the DA. On the 6th of December 2021, we received a request for information from council. It did not raise any matters to do with Transport for New South Wales. I called the assessing officer at 1:54pm on the 17th of December and I said to her, have you received anything from Transport for New South Wales? She said, no, I haven't. We will not hear anything from Transport for New South Wales for months. I found this to be weird because I expected that she would have heard from Transport for New South Wales already. Weeks went by, on the 27th of January, an email from Transport for New South Wales was uploaded to the portal and it was dated the 22nd of November. So weeks, three weeks prior to my conversation with the assessing officer. And that email was entitled, Request for Additional Information.
Time. Well now. Yes, you are a few. You're allowed to move a second one minute extension. Yeah, so it's moved by councillor Hawkins, seconded by councillor Sander. All those in favour? Councillors Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Jurd and Savell, those against councillor Olson, I'll declare carried. This is the final one minute extension.
Final one minute? I, because I received that email, I called Transport for New South Wales the next day at 9:31am and I said, how come we didn't receive this email? And they said, we were, I was called by the assessing officer and I was told not to participate in the assessment of this matter. This is somebody from Transport for New South Wales. They told me, you hadn't responded. I know I was told this by the assessing officer. So I uploaded the request for information to the planning portal so that you could see it. Of course, council would know. I quote one sentence from the Environmental Planning and Assessment Regulation, which says, immediately after receiving a request for information from a concurrents authority, a consent authority which is council, must request the additional information from the applicant. That didn't happen, I could go on. The reason we didn't have this information for Transport for New South Wales is councils did not participate for the first seven months of this application. I'm requesting that council consider the plans we've already submitted to resolve the outstanding issues.
Okay, that time, are there any questions for Mr Bonifant? No questions from councillors, please thank Mr Bonifant for his presentation. We'll now move to deal with report PE 70 2022. So the recommendation's been moved by councillor Burke, is that seconded? By councillor Sander? No debate? Councillor Olson?
The applicant's just basically told us there that he hasn't got all his information into us. And I would have, would have preferred if we deferred this to give this applicant a bit more chance to talk to the planning department and get the information they require. So that we don't end up having, just coming back through the Environment Court or something like that where we have a bit more control over it. So I would, I'll put up an amendment that we defer this until the end of February.
Can I just flag before you do that councillor Olson? Just to make sure you're aware of the timeline on this. This matter did come to council in April, I believe, the April meeting. The director's confirming. And council did defer this item at the April meeting to allow for exactly what you've suggested to happen. And it hasn't been resolved between April and now. But you're entitled to move it, I just wanted to make sure you're aware of the.
Yeah, that's fair enough. I just, I just think that, that, look, I don't want to crucify the person because paperwork hasn't all stacked up. But if he's got information that can be helpful for approval for his development and it will help the local economy, I'm quite happy to wait till the end of February. But if he doesn't give us something by the end of February, I would do same well. No, no more chances, so that's, that's my.
So, so you're just moving for a straight deferral?
Yep. To the end of February.
Seconded, but seconded by councillor Jurd. That's a procedural motion, so we'll put that to about whether we defer that, this matter now. We'll deal with that. So all those in favour of the deferral? Is councillors Moores, Dunn, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Olson and Jurd. Those against? Is councillors Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Savell. The deferrals carried. So. So you have a question, but that defers that item and resolve. Yeah, so councillor Hawkins?
Can I seek a point of clarification on the deferral? As I, am I to understand correctly that the deferral is so that those accusations just made can be addressed?
The items, it's a procedural motion that's just deferred and would be dealt with in the February meeting? The director?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The deferral means that this matter will be now deferred to the February meeting. With the way the agenda works, we'll have to have a report put together probably by about the third week of January and that'll come back to council for a decision on this DA.
Okay. We'll now move on to the next item for public address in relation to report PE 71 2022. The, speaking against the recommendation, we have Paul and Jodie Chandler. So thank you and you have three minutes.
Thank you all members for listening to us again. Second time, we're here again. Now, we would like to talk about road, the road access. In the driveway is approved, there is only one car space for street parking, not two as stated. Visual amenities. Any house or building will affect the house on the corner block of Caledonia Street and Conduitway Street from sunlight. Stormwater and management. Conduitway Street holds a lot of water. Any building or driveway will affect the street from stormwater. With all the runoff from Caledonia Street entering down into Conduitway Street. Sorry, I don't even know the name of my street. Now, in saying that, the, the owner of 39 Conduitway Street is fully aware of how much water our street holds. He has dug trenches on the medium strip to allow the water to escape. They are still there till today. Social effects. 41 Conduitway Street will be affected from shining lights from cars when entering the property as it is only six metres from the driveway. Car lights shine at 160 feet, which is about 49 metres. Lights will most definitely shine into our bedroom window. Furthermore, there's no shed or carport at the front of 49 Conduitway Street. The shed is in the backyard. So when cars drive in there, there's no buffer between the driveway and our bedroom, which will affect us enormously. The fencing. The owner at 39 Conduitway is agreed for us to get three fencing quotes as stated last time in August and we did so on the 17th of October 21. As of today, our fence is not replaced. We request, if for any reason this DA is approved. The investor from 39 Conduitway Street is to pay and supply fencing at no cost to 41 Conduitway. Conclusion, as you are all aware, this DA was refused by all councillors in August to which we attended. As said by the investor from Sydney previous meeting, his intentions was to build duplexes.
We have a, the time expired, so councillor Hill has moved an extension for a further minute, seconded by councillor Hawkins. All those in favour? Councillors Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Jurd, voting for the extension, and Savell. Those against councillor Olson, will declare carried to one further minute.
Thank you. Kursley is a small quiet village. Conduitway Street being a tiny five bedroom street. Five home, sorry. All residents of our street and surrounding opposed to this DA. We all love their open living life, finally. We are asking for your deepest sympathy considering people before profit. Thank you very much for listening to us.
Thank you. And just before you go, we'll just ask to, do the councillors have any questions? For Paul and Jodie? No questions? That, please thank them for their presentation. Now speaking in, for the recommendation for report PE 71 2022, Mr Martin Ball. Thank you, Mr Ball, you have three minutes.
Thank you Mayor, thank you councillors. I must say I'm a little surprised to find myself addressing the council in relation to this application, which on any view is relatively innocuous and is not one which should really be taking so much of your time. However, here I am and I am representing the owners who are mum and dad, owners from Sydney and not property developers of any major note. I think that I can say little more than commend to you the very careful and detailed assessment that your, your own staff have provided you with in the assessment report. It is worth noting, I think, that you have now had the benefit of assessment of this proposal in its original form and now in its amended form from two of your expert staff and on both occasions, they have recommended approval. In its amended form, the application clearly addresses one of the reasons for refusal on the prior occasion and that was the non-compliance with the minimum lot size of one of the proposed lots. Both lots now comply. In terms of the other two reasons for refusal on the prior occasion, I again commend to you what is included in the assessment report prepared by the applicant, the owner's consultants, which clearly in my respectful submission demonstrates that the proposal is a suitable one, both for its particular location and for the Kursley environment and will provide a small measure of benefit to the ongoing viability of certain facilities and so forth in the Kursley area. I think that there is little more that I can say other than to perhaps point out that, you know, I have been engaged in the unfortunate event that the council declines to grant consent with a view to taking the matter further. I would sincerely hope and my clients sincerely hope that that won't be necessary because we hope and expect that this council and the council laws will make a considered decision, having regard to the planning controls that apply and the compliance with those controls that are demonstrated by the amended application. And that is my client's hope and expectation that the council will, will make that considered decision in an appropriate way and no further action will be required. If that's not used up by three minutes, so be it, but that is all that I wish to say.
Thank you. Do any councillors have any questions for Mr Ball? Councillor Moores?
Thank you Mayor. Just a question on fence, was there a fence that was said that was going to put up there or?
Councillor through you, Mayor councillor, I'm not across the issue to do with the fencing. I heard the previous speaker raise that issue and it's certainly something that I can get instructions about, but at present I don't have that information.
When you say the mums and dads, are they, are they going to live in these properties? Or are they just for sale?
I don't believe they're going to live there, but that's not something I've asked them.
So obviously they're not mums and dads living in the village, they're not going to the village, are they?
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Grine?
Thank you, I was just going to ask about whether or not they've had any communication in regards to the fence because obviously you can understand our concern that the neighbour is already quite stressed and distressed in regards to this situation. I was just interested to see if you had anything on that relation.
Again, I haven't had an opportunity to ask that, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you.
And I might ask a question, whether it's for you or whether it's the owner's views that people wish to live in these rural village lifestyles, to live with houses on top of each other?
Mayor, I'm not sure I understand the question with respect. The proposal is for a subdivision, one lot into two lots and what follows will be assessed in accordance with your council's planning controls and dealt with in that way.
Okay, no further questions? Please thank Mr Ball for his presentation. We'll now move on to dealing with the report PE 71 2022. Is someone moving the recommendation or is?
Propose or a question to the director in regards to a possible amendment for a condition of consent in regards to the concern raised by the first speaker? Would it be possible, Director, for a condition of consent relating to the installation of a fence to no cost, bearing the cost by the applicant to suit the requirements, to suit the request as per that was raised by the first speaker?
Director?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I don't think that such a condition would be appropriate. There are provisions under the fencing, fencing act, I think that's the correct terminology, that allows for sharing of costs or otherwise and that's the appropriate legislation to use.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Burke? The question? So, so just before we, so councillor Hill was, was moving the, the recommendation as it was? Is that seconded? By councillor Dunn? Do you want to speak on, on that councillor Hill?
Thank you Mesa Val. I, I am moving to, moving the recommendation as it stands. But my, my position on this, I think, is reflected in, similar to the mayor's question to the second speaker, is that I don't believe that the rural village areas that we have around our LGA should be, should be susceptible to this sort of sub-development and building upon. In where I live myself there in Head and Greata, we have a similar small section of the village that is all old 800 square metre blocks and it's the same sort of village character that I would like to see. And I think should be, people that live in there suspect to see maintained across the board. The concern at this point with this application is that our planning guidelines do not preclude people from being able to do a subdivision. And while I understand that our council is currently investigating possibilities on how we can implement restrictions or possible guidelines to allow the small village lifestyles to be maintained, that is unfortunately not in place as of now, which does not give us a leg to stand on to legally combat or battle this sort of, the rejection of this DA in court. So while this application, I'm moving to support the recommendation as stands, I really do hope to see that this is the, one of the last developments like this that we see in a rural village location that subdivides the existing blocks down. But it's, I'm just very disappointed to see that this one is a little bit too early in the timeline. But in future, hopefully we can avoid this situation reoccurring.
Councillor Jurd?
Thank you Mayor, I've actually got a question for the director of planning, if I could. So when we had McDonald's come to us and there was a noise complaint issue with that one, the lady was able to get shutters and stuff put on her house? Is there a way we can do something like that to help prevent? Because I know you just said that you can't do anything about the fence, but could there be something put in place to prevent, help with the noise?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Not in terms of a council decision. If you recall in the McDonald's situation, that was a case where the applicant McDonald's approached that neighbour and offered a solution. It would be up to the landowner in this situation, if they wanted to do that, to make an approach to the neighbour and, and offer to do something, but there's nothing compelling them to do so.
They haven't contacted him about the fence, I don't think they'll do that anyway. I'm actually a bit disappointed this one's come about. As a resident here, I know that, looking at the paperwork, we're supposed to vote. Yes, it all ticks the boxes, but sitting here as a resident myself, I would hate this to be happening next door to me. So unfortunately, I have to vote with my conscience, thank you.
Councillor Burke?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I've also got a question for the director. If I heard you correctly, before you said that you didn't think it would be appropriate for us to put a condition of consent. Are you saying that we can't put a condition of consent? Or are you just saying that it's not appropriate?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I'm saying it's not appropriate and that it's not a valid planning reason to put a condition on. You could put a condition on, but I suspect it would be challengeable.
So I guess the, I, look, I'm feeling for, certainly the residents have spoke tonight and appreciate them coming along in such a stressful time. It's like the mayor has said in the question and also councillor Hill. I'm not a fan of the bad lucks blocks, you know, not in rural areas. You know, we don't want that. We want the rural setting to stay as it is. You know, people have been living there for 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 years, some of them. And they, we live in this area or in those types of areas, in those villages for a reason. You know, it's, we've already got the state government doing things and to have developments like this come up, it is disappointing. And like councillor Hill said, it's just a little bit too early. We're not so far down the tract in regards to our character statement. And, and I do hope that in the future that we can get our, our character statement up to date and we're able to, to say no to these types of developments in rural villages. Like councillor Hill has said, it is a bit of a tricky one because, and as we heard from the second speaker, that if we go against what the staff have recommended, that further action will be taken, it'll be taken to court. It will certainly cost this council significant amount of money. I know that that shouldn't excuse. Um I know that that shouldn't excuse um our decisions, but it has to come into play. We we also have to try and find someone to um to defend it in court. And that can be a bit tricky when you've got a development like this up for approval. It's up for approval for a reason. It's it's meeting the requirements all by a a fraction of it. Um so like it's already been expressed, I am disappointed. Um it is a rock and a hard place, but um yeah, I'm I'm leaning on, I'm verging on the edge to add a condition of consent um regarding the fencing, because if it does get approved, I think that the um the residents should be, and so they didn't ask for this development, they're happy to live with how things are now and how the fencing is. The applicant's making the change, so the applicant should be supporting the residents next door. Um so um yeah, I I'd like to try and add in the condition of consent if I can, if there's um a way that we can do that.
So in in regards to the the condition of of consent, um you you potentially could put an an amendment um forward in in regards to that matter um which would be um a dot point three, I imagine, to the to the report um saying something along the lines that uh a further condition of consent be included. In. So, sorry, you had a.
Sorry, just as a clarification, consent condition twenty six on page one fifty nine refers to fencing. Um it refers simply to internal fencing, perhaps it could refer to external boundary fencing as well? Is that something the director could maybe advise us?
So. The in the enclosure.
Page one hundred and fifty nine of the agenda. Three, Mr Mayor, if you're gonna add a condition like that, um it probably for the sake of ease, a twenty six becomes twenty six A and a twenty six B would be something along the lines that um boundary fences are to comply with the Dividing Fences Act nineteen ninety one. I don't know if that goes far enough for you?
Um so.
Can we condition as the first paragraph, one point eight metre high solid sheet metal lap and cap panel fence must be installed between the proposed lots to ensure privacy along the Battleaxe driveway and at the rear of the proposed lot twenty one? Now, we're ensuring privacy between the two lots being created, but we're not ensuring privacy between neighbouring lots. Can that paragraph be amended to include boundary fencing of the proposed subdivision?
So, yeah, through through you, Mr Mayor. Look, you you can amend it along those lines. What I'm, what I'd advise you though is if it is contrary to what is in the Dividing Fences Act, then um it it won't, it won't work. Um you won't be able to apply it.
Okay. So councillor Burke, you had the.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Bill. I guess i- it's already, it's it's on page hundred and fifty nine of the of the uh agenda. It's there, it's it's item twenty six, so it probably doesn't need to be added to the to the motion, but I guess the legal representation for the applicant is here tonight and I do hope that that person goes back to the applicants and the applicants have a conversation with the neighbours. Uh we can't force them to, but in good faith of our local community that they definitely go back and they do that. And I'll certainly be chasing up to whether that happens or not. Um it'd be disappointing if uh if that doesn't happen.
Okay, um councillor Moors, did you already speak? No, councillor Moors.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh to director, uh uh just wanna know, have we worked out whether all the water's gonna go with this drainage problem that's at the front of this block?
Director.
Um look, not not specifically in terms of of assessing the application. Let's just be clear, the application is for a subdivision of two lots and any further development as a result of that subdivision will have to comply with any council rules, whether it be in the um uh development control plan or any other council rules in place in relation to stormwater.
Okay, thank you. Uh councillor Painter? That's right.
Um I feel for the for the neighbours um in this situation, but as it stands, uh the rules are that we um don't have much of a choice but but to accept. And what um councillor Hill has said, I would hope in good faith that the upper council are here would engage with the neighbours to um do something for them to mitigate and also moving forward to have a good relationship with those neighbours um down the track. Um that's all.
Thank you. So um we'll now um get ready to put the motion. I might just um mention to the um the Mr Ball and and the um property owners that they may wish to stay around for um an upcoming merril minute in regards to protecting our villages, to hear the councillor's views on what we think's appropriate development uh in these sites and what council is actually doing to protect these villages um in into the future and and maybe ask you to consider whether you wanna act on on any decision that that's made uh tonight. So uh I will put that uh motion, all those in favour? Councillors Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Watten, those against. Councillors Moors, uh Olsen and Judd uh and Savell. Uh I'll declare it carried. Uh we'll now move on to uh consideration and adoption of all reports by englobo. Um. Moving councillor Burke? This screen's gone wrong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh but having read and considered the reports in the agenda related to items NI seven two thousand and twenty two, notice of intention to deal with matters confidential session, which relates to report CC ninety six uh two thousand and twenty two. Uh MM seventeen, minutes of the organisational and general manager's review, which was held on the ninth of November. GMU thirty two, minutes of the audit risk committee. GMU thirty three, audit risk committee independent chair. PE seventy two, appointment of council external alternate members to the Hunter Central Coast Regional Planning Panel. PE seventy four, the comprehensive LEP review twenty twenty two in relation to planning proposal eighteen slash two thousand and twenty two slash for heritage theme. CC ninety five, rent relief, Sessnock Airport. CC ninety eight, twenty twenty four local government election engaging of New South Wales electoral commissioner. CC ninety nine, review of the privacy management plan twenty twenty two. CC one hundred, misuse of council resources in relation to the March twenty twenty three state election. CC one oh one, disclosures of written returns. CC one oh two, resolutions tracking report. CC one oh three, investment report for November. WI seventy seven, extraordinary minutes of the local traffic committee held eighth of December. WI seventy one, minutes of the road review committee held thirtieth of November. CO twenty three, CC fifty eight slash twenty twenty two, accounting treatment, rural fire service fleet. And CC, uh sorry, CO twenty four, uh LGNSW twenty twenty two special conference.
So moving that the recommendations be adopted, so moved by councillor Burke, seconded by councillor Groan. Uh all those in favour? It's unanimous? Uh was with, did we refer to WI seventy nine?
Oh, um. WI seventy nine is, uh no, just in in normal meeting. It'll it'll go into the meeting.
Yep. Um so moving that way, um so we've we've dealt with that. Now we'll move on to um merril minutes. Uh MM eighteen, twenty twenty two, I'll move that way. And uh question councillor, or statement councillor Olsen?
Yeah, uh thanks, Mayor. Um in the minutes there, it says uh in in attendance was councillors Sander, Hill, Olsen, Burke and Painter. Um I know I'm on that committee. I think Paul Painter is, councillor Painter is. I'm not sure about councillor Burke. I think he is as well. So we should be up in as as being present, not down in the attendance. I'm not sure, I don't think Hill and Sandra are on the committee.
So um we could ask that that be updated in the the minutes that um that um councillor Olsen, Burke and Painter be moved into the present section?
Yeah, so so the second thing I've questioned I'd like to ask about. Councillor Dunn was there via Teams. Why aren't we allowed to attend um uh briefing sessions via Teams?
I don't know that that's a question in relation to this report, but it's probably a question for the general manager.
Yeah, well, this is a review of the general manager's performance and I'm just I'm just querying why we were allowed to do it and now we're not. But we're allowed to to attend a uh a committee meeting via Teams. So why isn't it via Teams allowed all the time?
Okay, general manager.
Uh through you, Mr Mayor. Um council briefing sessions are in intended to pro- promote a a certain level of debate amongst councillors um with the staff being present to actually inform and uh carry on uh any information that's required by the councillors. The briefing sessions are always encouraged to be in person apart from when a um the COVID regulations came in through the office of local government, which allowed a lot of those things to be held via Zoom or whatever the the meth- the method was at the time. Um with committee meetings, they're not a formal um meeting of the full council um and the decision's been made to allow those to um be attended by remotely by Zoom or whatever Teams is available at the time.
Why we're doing it, but it doesn't, it doesn't seem uh acceptable to me that we can't, we can have a, it's not a full council meeting. It's a briefing session, it's a briefing about information we're getting. And I still think we should be able to uh uh attend via via Teams. I'll put a notice in the motion about that in the new year. Um I'll move on from that. Um I did have a notice of motion up recently about the general manager and how he was gonna improve our standings. Now, this is, that was the put away, voted down because we're gonna have the general manager's review committee was going to have this review of the general manager. And that was gonna answer all that questions. Well, I read the paperwork and I don't see anywhere how it tells me how he's gonna implement any change in this council. It's all about dot points of what the general manager can reach. And it's being set up in relation to the general manager's performance agreement in consultation with the general manager. I would have thought that we wouldn't have a HR person in there and we wouldn't have anyone else but councillors setting up this documentation for our for our general manager, the only person we employ and hire and fire. I don't accept what we're doing as being good practice, especially having a human resources manager in there that works for the general manager, assisting us to set up the guidelines. Uh unfortunately, that that doesn't go down well with me and I won't be supporting this motion tonight. And if the conditions, the, if if we accepted my notice of motion prior, we might have been able to get a better understanding what the general manager's gonna try and do for this council. And I've never heard anything what he's gonna try and do yet. And all we're trying to do is set up a uh a review of a general manager that he is gonna be in consult consulted with before we approve what conditions we got, he's gotta meet. And I did hear in that meeting when we were talking, people saying, that's too hard, he can't get there. So I think we've gotta set unrealistic goals and see how close he can get to them. Um if if he can't get, if he doesn't get even closer or even attempt to do them, well, then that's not good enough for me. And I want a general manager that's prepared to work for the council and make this council a lot better than what it is. Thank you.
Councillor Dunn?
Yeah, um thank you. Through you, um Messeval. I just wanted to touch base with respect to um the briefings and and teams and being able to attend. Um as everyone knows, I I travel for work and most of I I align all of the weeks away for for work around the council meetings. I'm here for the council meeting weeks. And every briefing that I have missed, I've been able to um go online and watch and take part in question. So um as far as not being able to um be able to see the briefings, we've we've always had the opportunity through the link to be in the calendar to be able to actually um have those. And if you don't see a link, it's not a difficult issue to send an email to someone and ask for it just to make sure that you've definitely got it.
Uh councillor Hill?
Uh thank you, Messeval. Um in follow up from councillor Olsen's comments about the um the discussions had at this meeting of the organisational and general managers' review. Um I am not completely uh sure about what it was, what was discussed in the meeting. I don't wanna put any words into councillor Olsen's mouth, but could councillor Olsen give me some information perhaps on any concerns that you raised in that meeting on the day about your um disappointment in the discussion and the items that were put forward? Um and whether or not those were accepted by the committee or were shot down by the committee or what that process was like as a, as you're a sitting member. I'm only a spectator at those committees, but are you able to give some clarity on that?
Question of councillor Olsen?
It's it's a confidential meeting and I can't speak about it.
Okay. Uh councillor Judd?
Uh this is just for Paul, oh sorry, Dunn, councillor Dunn over there. I actually wasn't able to to attend um one of the briefings via Teams. I actually asked for the link and got told I wasn't allowed to have it. Just 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 so you knew, yeah.
Okay, uh in closing, um and and I will refer to some of the points uh made in discussion around this and 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 about discussions with gen- the general manager and and how he was implementing things. Uh in the uh one that was referred to in MM seventeen that that council just adopted, um there was discussions in that and around the organisational structure and and works that would be going uh like a a discussion from the general manager in regards to that and questions around how he will be implementing those things. Um unfortunately, councillor Olsen, you um weren't, you didn't attend that one. Um but that would have been a good one to have that discussion in because the councillors that did. Yeah, yes. Um and so there was the question of what you were asking about um dealt with in in that meeting. So uh we'll now put that uh item, all those in favour? Uh councillors Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Judd and Savell. Those against councillor Olsen, uh declare carried. Uh moving on to report MM nineteen twenty twenty two, uh I'll move the 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 motion as uh put forward. Uh the waste levy is something that's been discussed uh recently across the Hunter and through the Hunter Joint Organisation of Councils. Uh our council uh has to pay a hundred and fifty one dollars sixty per tonne for every uh tonne of waste that goes over our waybridge um into our waste management facility to the state government. Uh we don't get that back uh as much as we would like in regards to grants uh to helping us reduce our our waste. Um and so this is uh about asking the the premier and the leader of the opposition to um commit to returning more of that waste levy back to the uh the communities that are involved and helping us implement uh our waste resource and recovery management strategy. Uh councillor Olsen?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Interesting this this topic. It's been around for a long, long time. It started back in the nineties um by the then premier of New South Wales, Bob Carr. And um he said it was a great idea to get money to stop, to help encourage people to reduce waste and put money back into the environment. Now, it all gets into general revenue now and it's just a cash grab by our state government. Um and no, no state government has changed it since then except increase it. Now, if if they were. Now, if, if they were seeing income, saying it's about reducing waste, uh, they would be doing something to help people reduce their waste, but they're not. They're just taking the money and using it wherever they want, wasting it on whatever they want to waste it on. As a council, we should be, we have to charge these people to go over the weight bridge. We have to be accountable for everything we do with that and we have to give, then give the money to the state government. We get criticised by people because all the costs of dump their wa, their waste and they end up dumping a lot of it in the bush, which is disgusting and it's, it's a problem that will never go away while you've got to, we're charging so much to put, uh, dump waste in the tip. I, I think that what, with the state government having an election in March next year, we should be making sure both, uh, candidates who think they're going to be premier next year should commit to giving all this money back to environmental projects, whether it be in Cessnock or wherever, but help the environment. Building, uh, recycling factories, et cetera, et cetera, in different locations around the state to help res, our recycling programme, to help the community in getting rid of our waste instead of just smashing them for money and then putting it into something else, wasting it on whatever they want to waste it on in general revenue. It's been, it was a silly thing brought in by the Labour government back then. It's, it's produced absolutely nothing for the local community, except more waste in the, in the, in the bush. And it has achieved nothing for the, the reduction of waste. We're a frail waste society, it's the way it's been developed by the big business and the big business don't take back their waste. We end up having to get rid of it at our cost. Then the cost is thrown onto us by the state government, they keep passing the buck on to councils. And unfortunately, I think that our state government, whoever's running for state, for Liberal and Labour need to be committing to a full return of this money to environmental projects. And that, that would help ease some of the drain on council. And, uh, we might even be able to have a recycling centre in, um, the Hunter region somewhere where it creates some jobs. And we wouldn't have to worry about getting rid of our waste overseas or wherever we send it to and get it recycled somewhere else. So, uh, let's hope that we can get a change of the government's way of thinking instead of just pouring the money into general revenue again.
Okay, councillor Hill?
Thank you, Messavell. Echoing councillor Olsen's statements, I think it's disgusting to see the state government return so little of the, of the community's money that, uh, currently operate, seems to operate as an additional tax on, on our ratepayers. That they, we're, we're instructed to receive this, uh, take this money from the, uh, ratepayers to, to pay the state government and see so little of it come back. So I, um, I congratulate the mayor on this, on this meral minute and, and will have my support.
Thank you councillor Hill, councillor Painter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm a hundred percent, um, behind what councillor Olsen said, um, councillor Hill and yourself. Um, just so they know that with orphan sites, which is previous landfill sites which need rehabilitation, there's currently ten million dollars in that fund of ratepayer money, um, that has been earmarked for those projects. If this five point five million which has been raised over this, um, this period of time was returned where it was raised, that could go towards, uh, those, um, projects and the burden on the ratepayer would not be as, as excessive as it is. And I just don't understand why levy that's, um, paid for by the community in this area isn't spent in this area on improving community facilities and environmental projects.
Thank you councillor Painter, um, and the last thing to note, uh, for, for people in regards to this is, um, our council's also determined as a metropolitan council in regards to, to this levy, uh, which means our, as I mentioned before, our, our rate per tonne is a hundred and fifty one dollars sixty, uh, compared to our neighbouring council of Singleton, uh, that's considered a regional council, uh, and only pays eighty seven dollars and thirty cents per tonne. So it's a big significance in the categorisation as, as well as the, um, the, the money coming back. Um, I've closed debate, councillor Hawkins? Um, is, did you have a, a question or? Question?
Clarify, are we asking for a re-evaluation of our categorisation from metropolitan to regional?
Not in the, the actual motion itself.
Have we?
Um, I'm sure I could add it into, um, a letter that I, I wrote to the.
Could it maybe be a point six, dot point six of this, is that? Suitable?
Yeah, I've, I've already closed debate, but I will try and to endeavour to include, include that comment in any letter. Um, so putting that, that motion, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Uh, moving on to, uh, report MM twenty 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 two, uh, subdivision and development in villages. Um, this is what I discussed, uh, earlier, uh, in the night, um. It's something that council's been working on, uh, for, for some time in regards to our, uh, village character statements and, uh, public domain plans. And where we've, we've done a, a fair amount of community consultation around that and, and what was evident from the community consultation and from the councillors' views, uh, in the earlier discussion tonight is that councillors, um, and, and the community want to protect our rural villages. They feel like people that want to, to live in those villages choose to live there for the village lifestyle that that provides. If they wanted to live in a, a small four hundred and fifty square metre block with, with neighbours on, on top of each other, they would probably, uh, move in somewhere closer to the CBD, um, of Cessnock or Curry or into one of our newer, um, development estates. There are a variety of options available, um, and we're, we're fortunate in our local government area that we do have a, a variety of options. Uh, but the, what we need to do is, is look at how we can prevent future overdevelopment um, and make sure that the, the rural lifestyle that people love about our community is protected um, as developers, uh, continue to try and, um, develop land across our local government area. So this is about, um, looking at ways to, uh, do that, uh, in, and bringing back a report to council as we finalise the, the villagers' master and public domain plans. Um, and looking at options around things like can the minimum lot size be increased for these areas to seven hundred and fifty square metres? Um, to making sure that there is a, uh, a village feel about, uh, these, these locations that we have. So, um, I'm putting forward this, uh, motion and, um, and as I said earlier in the night, I do hope, uh, the previous developers do consider this, um, in, in the direction that council wants to take our community, uh, forward. And, and as was discussed, uh, by a number of councillors, uh, earlier in the night, um, it is disappointing that unfortunately we haven't been able to, uh, get this in place, uh, as soon as we probably would have liked. Um, so with that, I'll call councillor Burke.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, and I'm certainly happy, uh, to support this, uh, meral minute tonight. It's, uh, before I got onto council, you know, when Badalax boxes were going up, I just thought, you know, well, they fit, so it's not too bad. It wasn't until I got onto council that I realised, um, I think it's, I guess it does, um, a bit of damage to our, our rural landscape, you know? And people have been living in our villages for a long time and let's say you've got a block of four houses, you know, two back to back, uh, and there's enough room to put in a house behind, you've just doubled the amount of people, you've doubled the amount of cars. And it takes away what our rural vi, villages are meant to be like. Um, you know, it's, it's a, a landscape, it's a lifestyle. And it, that's one thing that I, um, you know, heard, uh, our previous mayor, uh, Bob Pinson talk about a lot is, you know, people move to Cessnock, uh, and want to live in Cessnock for the lifestyle and it's spot on. Um, I'll never live anywhere else because of the lifestyle and I would hate to see that, uh, we are forced to, you know, go putting houses in the back of backyards because they fit. Um, you know, we've got to look after our town, I'm not saying that it's, um, I'm not saying that it's, it shouldn't happen, but I think there's appropriate places for it. Uh, and in our villages, uh, like you've listed in the meral minute there, uh, like Abermain, Greata, Kursley, they don't need it. Uh, the, the township is, is, uh, more focused on Curry, Curry, uh, Cessnock, Huntley, you know, um. Putting, uh, Badalax boxes or putting these types of developments, uh, in our villages isn't appropriate. Uh, while it's permissible at the moment, I do hope, I really hope in the future that the previous development application that we had to vote on, we don't have to vote on them anymore because we don't accept it.
Okay, no further, councillor Moores?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I agree with the councillor, but also what I'm saying is these are people that live in these villages, and I'm all for this myself because I, I've been round to this village and it opens your eyes when you're talking to people that says this was grandad's house. And they've been there themselves sixty years and it was their grandad's. So God knows how long they've owned that house, it's unbelievable. Everybody in the street knows everyone by first name and there's so community to start plonking houses at the back on because there's a block there, like councillor said, because it fits, it doesn't mean you have to do it. I think we should make these, these places a village and that's what the full, thank you.
You, councillor Sander?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, um, in regard to this, I have a question to the director of planning. Um, I don't like the Badalax blocks and I don't like squashing, um, homes into a block of ground that's not suited for it. The village aspect is certainly personal and it's great for people to live in. Um, the, the question is to the, um, director of planning, the granny flat situation. If you've got a big block of land, you, is it right that you can actually put a granny flat on the back of your block without council approval?
Director?
Um, yes, that's, um, it, it, there's a provision, uh, called, um, complying development. And if you meet the requirements of that complying development, you do not need necessarily council permission. You might need to get a, um, certificate of occupancy, um, but essentially you don't need to get a DA for it.
So what we're talking about now, it's, it may not happen anyway, they could come and pluck, pluck, um, granny flats on anyway. So it.
That, that's probably more of a statement than a, a question.
Yeah, but, but the question was that, yeah, so granny flats do not have to have council approval.
Yep, um, in, in regards to councillor Sanders' comment, um, and, and in closing, there's no other speakers, um, it, it is a concern around that and, and the state government overriding local planning, um, uh, approvals. Um, however, it is worth noting that I, I believe that in regards to granny flats, there are tighter conditions around size, location of where it can sit from the house and, and access and, and stuff like that. So you wouldn't get a house size granny flat being approved under complying development, um, in, in a backyard. So, um, thank you councillors for your support on this, um, and we look forward to, uh, hopefully progressing the, um, the, the protection of our villages in the future. Um, put the motion, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Uh, moving on to motions of urgency. No motions of urgency, uh, moving next on the list was GMU thirty four, uh, twenty twenty two code of conduct complaints. Someone moving that way was councillor Burke, seconded councillor Hill, uh, councillor Olsen speaking.
Yeah, thanks Mayor, I, I just, it's interesting to read this report. Um, because I asked previously about how much it costs for a code of conduct complaint and I was declined that information, but here it is tonight. Two complaints resolved, sixty five thousand dollars it cost this council and we've still got three outstanding. So three outstanding means on that figure, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars in the next financial year. And if there's any more than three, uh, it'll go over the hundred thousand dollars. So it's a lot of money, I just wish councillors would think about what they do before they put these, uh, code of conduct complaints in. Um, and if, if, if it is about me, um, I do offend people at times. If it's in an open council, ask me to apologise here, that'll save thirty thousand dollars. But if you don't want to do it there, keep going, keep wasting ratepayers' money. And what you'll achieve at the end is very minimal, to be honest, uh, it's, to me, it's just a waste of money.
Uh, councillor Dunn?
Thank you, Messavell, I would like councillors to consider what they say and do before they actually break the code of conduct.
Uh, councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just some clarification, if I could, those were some really wonderful numbers that were pulled out. Thirty thousand dollars per complaint, there were two of them resolved, it must be the answer. There were four complaints received, two finalised. Do we have any way of, obviously that means there's two outstanding? Three outstanding, not yet finalised, three, yeah, yeah. Now, read the report, that's an interesting concept because if you read the report, part H, the number of finalised complaints investigated where there was found to be no breach, how many was that? Zero. There were no complaints made that weren't investigated, that weren't a breach of our code of conduct. Now, there's three not yet finalised, I wonder where they're going to come back. But I think it's disingenuous and misleading to say that it's thirty thousand dollars per complaint and you'd save a hundred thousand dollars by just coming to me first rather than putting in a complaint. I, I tend to agree with councillor Dunn that perhaps if the code wasn't breached, we wouldn't have to spend any money enforcing it. If we all just acted like mature, reasonable adults with a sense of decency that followed a simple code of conduct, it's not that difficult. It's, it's a public document that anybody in the gallery probably should have read. Um, it, it's, it's a fairly simple thing to, to grasp. I just think it's disingenuous to manipulate numbers like that, councillor Olsen, that, as councillor Dunn said, zero breaches, there were zero non-breaches of this, of these complaints.
Uh, councillor Moores?
Thank you, Mayor. I did speak to the general manager a fair while back about doing a bullying and harassment course for the councillors. Because sometimes people speak without really knowing the consequences of the tone, the voice, and not realising that they are verbally abusing a girl or a female or a male. So I'd like to see this course be looked at again, GM, and, uh, let's try and educate us all, uh, of how we should speak and be in a manner to our peers, thank you.
Councillor Grine?
Uh, thank you, Messavell, um, I would like to ask a question to the director, uh, for corporate community services. We had a conversation today in regards to perhaps, um, some of these regulations changing in regards to code of conduct, um, for councillors. Is that something that we, um, my, my question is, do you foresee, um, that the code of conduct changes would prevent this sort of money being spent in the future?
Director?
Um, thank you, Miss, councillor Grine, um, what our conversation was about was a report that's been commissioned by the government, um, it was released yesterday and it was in relation to the code of conduct, the procedures and how they're managed. And certainly there is a dis, final discussion paper that, that was released like yesterday. Um, it is open for submissions, they do close on the third of February. So it will be distributed to councillors for your information, unfortunately I won't have time to get it to a full council meeting. Um, some of the proposals in there that takes out a lot of the operational side of managing code of conducts from within the council and, and basically allows the officer local government or one of their delegates to, to manage those. However, that will obviously come at a cost, so there will still be investigation costs and there will still be costs in relation to the management of those by the officer local government or the delegate. Um, how that will look, um, at this stage is too early to say. As I said, I only had a quick read through the ninety page of report yesterday. I think there's eighteen odd recommendations in there that they're asking for comments on. Um, the, some of the proposals in it are actually looking at the other side of it where there have been, um, conduct behaviour that has been found to be substantiated and they're looking to strengthen some of the, um, the outcomes of it. So at the moment, you know, you have censure and a, a range of other, other things, um, so they're looking at different options of how that will be. However, all that is probably at least. However, all that is probably at least twelve to eighteen months away before it would become operational. Because it will also involve a lot of changes to regulations and um some of the legislation in the Local Government Act. So I think longer term, it will um remove some of the um temptations to use it in a wrong way, the code of conduct. Um, potentially it will remove and reduce the numbers of them. Um, particularly if there's a strengthening in the outcomes, adverse outcomes for for councillors that have been found a breach. Um, but how that will look and where that will go, I think it's way too early to say. Um, but certainly there will be some opportunities for everyone to make a submission towards that. And we'll see where the government takes it and whether or not they accept those recommendations.
Thank you so much for that information. Um, I I I'm absolutely disgusted that we even have to spend this sort of money, ratepayers' money, on code of conducts, especially against councillors who've been, you know, we've been entrusted to do the right thing and behave in the right way. So I hope that these changes are made. So thank you, Director, for answering that question.
Thank you. With no further debate, uh we'll now put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, moving on to G M U thirty five, twenty twenty two, moving that way, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Hill. Uh, speaking on that, uh councillor Olson.
Yeah, the financial implications in this report says additional employee costs will be associated. Do we know how much we're talking about there, approximately?
Question for general manager.
Uh, through you, Mister Mayor. Um, approximately, um somewhere in the order of three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. Now, with these three positions, how how is that going to help? Uh, because this is confidential, I can't talk about the names of the positions. But how will these three new positions improve our um backlog, current backlog of um work, scheduled works?
The general manager.
Um, one of the key positions is the area of asset management. The asset management area is the key area to define what workload should be done on the Capital Works Programme and forward planning and and design work associated with those projects. Um, it is a crucial area that hasn't been looked at in this council for a long period of time.
Hmm.
Um, that's something that will address your concerns very directly.
So just just to one of them, right, okay. Seems like, it seems um like, I know a previous director was talking about an asset manager and an asset management team. And he said that would make, that he could structure things better. But um from what I'm looking at the structure there, other than the asset manager, it's not going to help much on the backlog of work we've got and it's going to be a lot more cost for a council. And um I just don't understand why we would want to be putting in them other positions when our main focus and main concern for the ratepayers is roads. And if anyone else's, my dis- people might disagree with me, but all I ever hear is roads, road, roads. And we need to get this backlog caught up with and then we might be able to start moving some, making some improvements. But, yeah, I just don't, I'm just not sure on that structure, so I'm not really gonna, I'm not gonna support it.
Um, just be- before we go, it might be worth clarifying that that councillors only get to determine the directorate structure, so whether there's the three directors or whether we have four or two directors. Um, we don't, this isn't about any of the changes that that go on under that. This is about the directorate structure. Councillor Judd.
It's just a quick question, Mayor. Is that the same paperwork we got in that meeting?
Uh, so that was in regards, yes, it was discussed at the um.
I remember one of them and then I just thought, I just wanted to double check if it was the the same that we talked about in the meeting.
Yes, but the top line of what councillors get to determine
Yep.
is is what we're discussing tonight and anything below the level of director
Mm-hmm.
is determined by the general manager.
No, I just wanted to make sure my memory was clear, remembering it.
Uh, so with that information, we'll put the item, uh all those in favour. Uh councillors, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Judd and Saval, those against councillor Olson. Um, moving on, next report is P E seventy three, twenty twenty two, uh councillor Hill, moving uh that way with an additional uh dot point.
Um, I'd like to add an additional amendment there to the uh resolution, which includes dot point three uh that council add a clause one point eight A savings provision into the draft Cessnock Local Government Environmental Plan amendments of Planning Proposal eighteen slash twenty twenty two slash two slash one to preserve development application lod- applications lodged but not determined before the finalisation of this plan.
Uh, seconded councillor Burke. Uh, no debate. Put the motion, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, moving on, report P E seventy five. Uh, twenty twenty two Development Application Performance Monitoring Report, moving that way, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Sander. Uh, speaking councillor Olson.
Yeah, 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 I, look, I've raised this issue before, but but this this report comes back and it's all about what we've done and what we've achieved and everything. I get the mums and dads out there to want to put a shed up or whatever and they come into council to put a D A in, which I think will be four to six weeks and then we walk away. And they're not getting all the information they need. They get their application in and they find they've got to do this, they've got to do that, there's more hoops to jump through. Can this council, surely we can, we're big enough and smart enough to be able to have a check sheet that we can give to the the person who comes in to put the application in. So that they know every hoop they've got to jump through before and every bit of information they need to supply before their D A is going to be approved or refused. So that these people don't go away and then come back and say, oh, hang on, we need a a a construction certificate, we need this, we need that. They, it it just, it's, I I, you probably have it, but I don't know if it's got, if it's worded correctly. We've got to remember when we're talking to planners and lawyers, we're all, they know what they're talking about. But the the person that comes in to put the one development application in in his, in their lifetime, really don't understand it. And they need a simple check sheet of this is the process, this is what you need. And I'm sure our our department could be sma- smart enough to be able to do that, it would make their job so much easier as well. And it would stop these people ringing me saying, what, 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 what? And all these costs come in after I've I've put my application in. So I I just asking if we can help the people, like the big developers and that, they 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 know what they're doing. Um, the ones that do developments every week or whatever, they know what they're doing. It's the the mums and dads, the ones that just want to do simple things, put a pool in or whatever. Simple stuff, um some sort of si- simple check sheet, that would be much appreciated.
Um, I'll ask the um director to respond and just noting for council and community members that don't know is that we do have a um duty planner um that is available to assist with pre-D A meetings um before they're lodged to assist people with with that, but the director can probably provide more detail.
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. Yeah, uh of course we have checklists for all these sorts of things for D A's. Um, we've actually drilled down into that a bit further because we also are are bamboozled as to why with checklist people still don't give us the information. Um, so for your interest, forty eight percent of every D A that's lodged in the portal does not have the required information in it. Twenty five percent of D A's lodged by professional planning consultants does not have the information that they say is in the application. So for example, we'll ask for a traffic report, there's certain things that have to be in a traffic report. The applicant will tick the box that they've complied with all that, will check the traffic report and key information is not in that report. Um, so, you know, there's an old story, you can lead a horse to water but you can't make it drink. We trying all sorts of things. We think we're going to probably have to go out with um some further education for applicants just to um try and find out why they are ticking things and saying they've included the information when they haven't. Um, so yes, it's, it is an issue, we recognise it. Um, we're drilling down to find out exactly what is causing it and we're trying to adjust our processes so that people will give us the information that is required, because that is the quickest way to get your D A assessed, is to provide us with all the information that we need to assess it.
Thank you. Um, councillor Burke.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and I certainly encourage the community to call the the customer service team and get the information uh firsthand. Um, it's, uh, the information is there, there's checklist definitely, I've used them myself um in in D A applications. And the new self-wires portal, um it's not something that uh Cessnock City Council created, it's mandatory. It's where you have to go, they suggest that you go through the new self-wires planning portal, it's not the most easiest thing to use. Um, and there's lots of information on there about development applications from the state government as well as uh what Cessnock City Council um put out. So I certainly encourage the uh community to make contact with council if they're having issues. Uh, and as the mayor said, there is a duty planner, um and you can have a pre-D A meeting. Uh, I've had two of them. Uh, so I think it's a a good thing um that this council's doing. I'm not saying that uh we've got uh everything perfect, um there's certainly uh room to move and I'm really excited since the general manager has been appointed. On a number of oca- of occasions, the general mani- manager has mentioned about streamlining the process or supporting the process for mum and dad D A's. Uh, we've heard here in the chamber tonight uh about, you know, bringing forward what the general manager is going to do this for this council. And I've heard lots of things over the last month or so. Um, so the concerns that some of these councils have in regards to the D A's, uh need to start listening to the general manager and what he's saying. Uh, because uh he's putting things forward uh to help the mums and dads out there and I'm excited to hear it.
Yeah, councillor Painter.
Yeah, through you, Mister Mayor. I just wanted a um question to the director of planning environment. Um, have we considered um on a quarterly or six monthly basis to have a workshop open to the public? Either via uh virtual or in person, where they can come in and do like a a day um thing for, you know, you you simple developments like your carports, sheds, pools and the like, where they can come in and like face to face with, we've had a duty planner. So instead of having council um consultation with one person, they can come in and maybe do twenty or thirty at a time on a quarterly basis, just a suggestion. Has this ever been um thought about?
The director.
Uh, yes, through you, Mister Mayor. Yes, those sorts of things have been thought about. What we find with a lot of the mum and dad developers is they're usually only doing this type of development once. Um, you know, maybe once every twenty years, so you know, the the um the likelihood of them coming in for something when it's not something that they want to do imminently is is probably low. Um, we we certainly, um while we don't discourage mum and dads to to try it themselves, the planning system is becoming more and more complicated and we do, where possible, suggest they go and get expert advice. And we are sort of um focusing a lot of our our effort on those probably smaller consultancies um to make sure they're just the breast of latest changes, et cetera, et cetera, so that they can help their mum and dad clients. And they can give us an application that's got all the information that it needs to have.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, uh no further debate, uh we'll put the item, all those in favour. Uh, it's unanimous. Uh, now moving on to uh report C C ninety seven, twenty twenty two. Uh, moving that way, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Hill, uh speaking councillor Olson.
Yeah, Mayor, I would like to put up an amendment to that motion. Uh, in point one, we change it from the um thirtieth of January to the ninth of January. Uh, and then I, point four, any other issues needing approval, an extraordinary council meeting be called of the full council. I want to put that amendment up because we've got two months.
Uh, sorry, we need a second uh for for that councillor Judd.
We've we've got two months between meetings and we get paid for January, uh we get paid for December. And um it's a long time between drinks and there could be a few issues that may come up early January. And there's no reason why we can't have an extraordinary meeting, we've had them already this year. And to any any major issues and that way then the full council gets to make the decision and not um not just two people.
So is anyone speaking on the amendment? Otherwise, uh councillor Burke.
So, thank you, Mister Mayor. I just wanted to ask a quick question, um and may not be able to give me an answer, but I'll ask it anyway. Uh, would there be a, uh I guess, a skeleton staff in January, considering it's probably the quieter period? Um, given the council doesn't sit in January?
Who's that?
To the, to anybody that wants to take it to the general manager.
Uh, through you, Mister Mayor, uh councillor Burke. Um, there is a, the council shuts down pretty much from Christmas Day until New Year's Day. But apart from that, there's a very large proportion of council staff here for the rest of the time. Um, and council tends to operate pretty much as normal over that period. Um, with the exception of maybe some of the outdoor construction crews, um which tend to take extended period of leave over that time. But the internal council operations tend to operate pretty much as normal. Thank you.
Uh councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I actually like this one. It's not saying that we have to have a meeting. We've done extra where they've been given a week's notice, so I I'm for this. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Uh councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. Um, perhaps it was answered in councillor Burke's um question, but I might have two points. One is the, would this have a a major negative impact on the availability of staff in regards to how early a report would have to be prepared for an extraordinary meeting? And just briefly, what would the, what would the additional cost be to have a meeting in that period if had, if it's not being prepared for? Or it hasn't been in the plans um since we voted on the schedule of meetings at last month's meeting?
Um, do you want the director?
Um, thank you councillor Hill. There would be a cost, obviously, um if it's an extraordinary meeting in relation to one particular item. Um, I don't think it would be extravagant in relation to holding the meeting. Um, but obviously we'd have to have enough enough councillors available to make it a um a quorum. And we would have to do the normal process for preparation of a council report and um distribution in the normal course. Um, however, even um if the council was in recess and something came up, there would still be a a range of work that would be done in the background anyway to provide that type of information to the the mayor and the general manager for them to make a decision. Um, it may not be as full-blown as a full council report, uh but there would be a cost, but I I can't put a price on it.
Hi councillor Moors.
Good man. All I can say here is that I try to make myself available for the full year. I don't have any holidays and this is, to me, is my holiday time over this period of time. So there's a lot of councils are the same, they're here every, month in, month out. And for every briefing. So I think this is just a a a charged the battery period. Thank you.
The amendment in regards to that any other issues needing approval, an extraordinary meeting be called for the full council, how would that, any other issues differ from that the li- list of matters considered, if any, be under delegated authority? Who would decide as to whether or not a decision that had to be made could be done on, under either delegated authority or at the council meeting? Extraordinary meeting. Or would we remove the delegated authority altogether?
I, I think councillor Olson's uh intention is to have the delegated authority through till the ninth of January. Um, and then no further delegated authority
Okay.
after that.
Okay.
However, I I would note that um there are delegated authority powers under the act regardless of of this that the mayor holds to to make policy decisions on behalf of council in between ordinary meetings. Um, and this is just actually expanding on that to include um those things being jointly done between the uh general manager and the mayor. Um, and if there was something of uh large significance uh that that would uh occur, uh a an extraordinary meeting could be called uh regardless of the uh the the thing, um if councillors sign, yeah, two councillors signed the letter to to call an extraordinary meeting. So, um, uh, so councillor Sander, you're.
Just a, through you, Mister Mayor, um just a question.
Just a, through you, Mr Mayor, um, just a question. The information that's, um, under delegated authority could, um, if there was an issue, wouldn't, um, councillors be informed via a memo? If there was any action needed?
Uh, yes, that's normally the, the practice we've undertaken when I've, uh, uh, implemented decisions, uh, in, um, in the past, uh, in between meetings, I've advised councillors via memo of those decisions.
Thank you.
Uh, and as noted in the original motion that, uh, and also the amendment that any decisions made under delegated authority are also reported back to council at the February meeting. Uh, no further debate, so we'll first deal with, uh, councillor Olsen's amendment. So all those in favour of councillor Olsen's amendment, uh, is councillor Painter, Watten, Olsen and Judd. Those against councillors Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Savell. Uh, I'll declare the amendment lost. Uh, we'll now move on to the, uh, motion. Uh, so we'll put the motion, all those in favour. Uh, councillors Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Savell. Those against councillors Painter, Watten, Olsen and Judd. I'll declare it carried. Uh, now moving on to, uh, report WI seventy four, twenty twenty two. Uh, moving that way, uh, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Grine, uh, speaking councillor, uh, Sander.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I, I appreciate the, the K, uh, the KPIs that have set in this report and the, um, Belgravia Health have met that, um, criteria, but I have, um, um, issues with the KPIs. Um, I was just asked the director of, um, uh, works and infrastructure, if there's any opportunity to review those KPIs that are currently in that, uh, contract.
Director.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, thanks councillor Sander. Um, at this stage, I haven't had a chance to review that contract. So I'll have to take your comments on notice and come back to you if that's okay.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, no further debate. Uh, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, report WI seventy five, twenty twenty two, moving that way. Uh, councillor Watten, seconded councillor Burke. Uh, speaking on that councillor Judd.
Okay, all right, I was just making sure I was on the right one. Um, I read this report and as much as I like the idea of using a booking system, I mean, I use it for my own business and it is great. Um, the issue I have with this is where does the volunteers stand? Like, so if we implement this booking system, I know using the booking system in my own business, how a lot of anyone that's over, and I'm gonna be polite and just say, at least in their seventies or eighties, um, have a lot of trouble using it. And a lot of our volunteers are up there in age and might not be very well great with their phone. So my concern with something like this is, one, the cost. Two, the volunteers just going, I can't be bothered learning this, it's too much, I'm not going to do it. So therefore, who then cleans the halls, gets them ready? Because if the volunteers don't do that, who does it?
Uh, so that's a, a question, I suppose, for the, for the director. Um, I, I think into, um, to answer, I'll hand over to the director, but this is, uh, about a trial, um,
Yeah, no, it's about a trial.
Um, sites that are willing to, to participate. And, um, based on the outcome of that trial, the, the recommendation talks about, uh, having further discussions uh, with that. Uh, I know it was discussed, um, at length by, by councillor Watten and, and other councillors when, um, I believe it was councillor Watten put forward the original, uh, idea around this, uh, to make sure that we weren't doing anything that would jeopardize the valuable work that our volunteers do. Because I think everyone is of the view that without the volunteers in our community that run facilities like this, um, we would, would not be able to, to run them out ourselves. So, um, there was nothing that I, I believe anyone would be attempting to do to, uh, upset the amazing volunteers that we have.
The only, the only thing, if I, if you, if I may, Mayor, usually after a trial, if everything seems to go well, it tends to happen, so I've gotta try and get my opinion out now.
Yes, yeah, and noting in, in the, um, the, the dot point three, it also says in con- consultation with those, um, those groups, but I'll ref, hand over to the director that might have some more information.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Thanks councillor Judd. Um, yeah, as, uh, the mayor's indicated, this is obviously a trial and, um, we will roll this system out and see how we go. Um, in terms of, you know, trying to be more efficient, which I think we, we're all in support of. Um, I think it's worth, you know, continuing with the trial and, and seeing what we get out of it. If, uh, following that trial, um, it doesn't work out, it doesn't stack up in that consultation period, then we'll obviously reconsider and bring all those, that information back where required.
Can I ask you one more question, seeing as I've got you? Um, so now at the moment, we have volunteers answering the phone and stuff, right? So what's the cost roughly on that? Do we pay the volunteers phone, anything like that?
Yeah, director.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, I'll have to take that question on notice councillor Judd, I don't have any facts or figures that I could give you right now.
Yeah, because what I'm concerned about is this is quite a large amount of money annually to pay for a booking system if it is something that we go ahead with. So I would like if, when you can get me on, on notice, so I can compare the thirty thousand to what we currently pay, if we pay anything to the volunteers. That'd be great, thank you.
Um, councillor Sander.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, yeah, I certainly reiterate what councillor Judd has been, uh, commenting on. Our volunteers are our bread and butter. Um, it's gonna cost a lot of money if they walk for council. Um, I know there's a progressive, um, you know, things have to progress the way, um, nature makes it to go, but the problem is um, I see the criteria of the trial, what, can I ask a question to the director? The cri- the criteria of the trial, um, what does that involve, director?
Director.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Thanks for the question councillor Sander. Um, again, I believe, you know, this is an opportunity to look at efficiency. Um, we have to try these things to see, see if they do work and obviously we'll take the feedback through that process, through that trial period to see if it pays off, but that's essentially what we're looking at is, uh, from a, an efficiency perspective.
Yeah, I know, but, um, I know from, that what, what we have is our, um, community halls. Uh, a lot of our volunteers do a lot of things for nothing, obviously, they're volunteers. If this has to come back to council and, um, we're costing council a lot of money, especially where our older volunteers, they will walk. And if they walk and we've got to pay for cleaning of halls and managing of halls, um, it would be very hard to, uh, swallow. Thank you.
Uh, and I might just ask the, um, manager to comment, who I know has done a, a fair amount of work with this system through other sections of, of council, so.
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, yes. Um, the system's, uh, basically gonna provide an opportunity to assist the, the volunteers, so, for example, if the system's online, the, the payment would, uh, happen automatically to go into the bank account directly, into the hall booking system's bank account, their own bank account like they do. So hopefully the process will make it more efficient for them and reduce their workload a- and help them. So it's not about taking away their role, it's about making their role easier. Um, and the whole premise was answering the original council, uh, request to implement a system to, to assist the community and, and the, uh, the hall managers.
Thank you. Hey councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, I have had time to read through this report in response to. What did I say?
Uh, I might refer to you to speak in, in reply if you as the mover of the motion. Um, councillor Hill?
Thank you, Messeval. Um, first off, I'd just like to congratulate councillor Watten for this, uh, wonderful NOM coming back to us as a report. I think the, uh, the simplification of this booking system would be great. My question now to the director of works or the manager, relevant manager is, will, um, individuals still be able to book the use of these halls that are involved in the trial u- using the old system of calling the volunteers or whatever system is currently in place? Or will you only be able to book during the trial through this, um, through this digital system?
Might refer to the manager.
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor. Uh, yes, there'll be an opportu- opportunity to do it both ways, so, um, council actually run some halls themselves, so the other ones we'll be looking to do first. And then the willing participant of some of those other community halls, um, will probably do next in the trial. And, um, the visitor information centre actually run bookings at the moment, so that'll be the conduit. So, um, you can either ring the hall directly or if they make a booking and they need to confer with the operator, the visitor centre staff will actually call the hall owner or the hall booking person, uh, make those, uh, hall bookings and then update the system. So, uh, there'll be a customer service, uh, aspect to this as well. Thank you.
Okay, uh, councillor Burke.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, I don't think you're gonna get any disagreement in this chamber that we love our volunteers, we need our volunteers and this is, this motion or this report is certainly not to upset anybody and if we have a look on page, uh, two hundred and twenty two of the report, um, it does say that the six out of the twelve committees are supportive and I know at least one or two of these, uh, committees that would love an online booking system. Uh, because the, the process is an onerous system and it does take a lot of time out of the volunteers. Uh, and I would hope that this trial is seen as a positive thing, that council's trying to help. Uh, we're certainly not trying to tell them how to do their roles because they do a fantastic one. But this trial is going to, I guess, give us, uh, an eye opener to whether, um, it works. If it doesn't work, then obviously we just keep the status quo, but, um, you know, I just wanna note that, eh, you know, six of the twelve committees have already provided supportive, um, feedback on the online system and I'm sure the other six, six will see the benefit of it as well.
Thank you, councillor Moores.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think we've just gotta tread lightly here because, mate, I think if, uh, I was a volunteer and you was trying to try all this and then it didn't work and you got egg on your face, I'd turn around and say, you forgot a bit round your ear because I'm not coming back. So you've just gotta watch that these people who's give their time and effort, whether, as councillor Burke said, they're six and six, have agreed. Terrific, but that's only fifty percent. There's still fifty percent out there that's saying, why are they doing this? What are we doing wrong? They've been there before and, you know, why try and mend the wheel if it's not broken?
Thank you. Councillor Sandy, you've already spoken.
I just want a question, Mr Mayor. No more questions?
You can ask a question.
I'll send one through tomorrow.
You can ask a question, but we'll, no, do, do you need a question? Yeah.
Um, just, uh, to the director, what timeframe were you looking at the trial and coming back to council?
The director.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Uh, again, I'll have to take that question on notice councillor Sander, I don't have the exact detail of the trial, but we'll let you know.
Uh, councillor Dunn.
Yeah, thank you, Messeval. Um, my question is, um, for several years now, the audit officers have said they've had issues with the, with regard to the three five five committees and their reporting of their financials. I'm just wondering, is this going to clean up a lot of those issues?
Director of Corporate and Community Services?
Um, thank you, Messeval. He will assist in some of the issues that have been raised, um, by the, the committee, uh, sorry, by the audit office, yes.
Yeah, okay, no further debate, we'll put the motion, all those in favour. Uh, uh, did, sorry councillor Watten was, yeah, didn't have his button on, councillor Watten.
Yeah, good to go. Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I was ready to vote in favour. And that was due to the fact that I, I do have a lot to do with the volunteers in the community and as with, in agreement with every councillor here, we've gotta look after them and this came as a, uh, in response back in April to go, what can we do to help? And, and to create a win-win situation because there's a lot of people in the community and outside the community looking for cheaper wedding venues. Dollars are tight these days. I know Brankston Hall in particular is looking to open up their doors and marketing for weddings, uh, which is a, a great thing. There's a big movement going on saying bring weddings back to the, the hall in Brankston, so I congratulate Helen. Through, through the Pat Avery's, through Weston, uh, the Cyclops Hall, um, you know, there's a lot of halls that, you know, I particularly have used personally and i- it is a bit of a cumbersome system, so I do hope that this trial does go successfully. I do hope it's a win-win situation and, um, that it really enhances what our volunteers do and assist them. Yeah.
Thank you councillor Watten and I, I can, uh, inform everyone that the, our halls are amazing wedding venues of having held my wedding reception in Curly Community Hall, so.
There you go.
Um, we will now put the, uh, motion, all those in favour. Uh, it's unanimous. Uh, moving on to reports WI seventy six, uh, twenty twenty two. Uh, moving that way councillor Burke, seconded councillor Sander, uh, speaking on that one councillor Olsen.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Messeval. Um, item, uh, what number is it? Uh, TC fifty, two thousand and twenty two, Ferguson Street, Sessnock on page two thirty three of the agenda. Um, that work's already started today, it's poured, they poured the concrete there today. My question is, we've got this approval for this section here. Are the other roads where they cross at Maitland Road, Allandar Road, et cetera, et cetera, what are we doing for people's safety to cross the roads?
So this is in regards to the, um, shared pathway?
Yes.
Yeah, so the bridge is held to Knockbar.
Because they cross on Maitland Road about a hundred metres from a pedestrian crossing, they cross on, uh, Allandar Road, uh, down the Calvery end of it. Um, I'm not sure where also do cross the road, some of them have got pedestrian crossings already there, some have got nothing. Yeah, Ferguson, yeah, that's Ferguson Street they were talking about here, yeah, yeah. So I was just wondering what we, what plans we've got, because if we've got, if we've already started to work on this one in Ferguson Street, what are we doing for the main roads?
Director.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, thanks councillor Olsen. Um, the traffic and transport team, uh, do extensive consultation with Transport for New South Wales and there's a set criteria around where, um, safe crossing areas are and, and, um, the conditions around that in terms of the Transport for New South Wales specification. And as part of the local traffic committee process, each of those goes through that process and, um, goes through the consultation period with review with Transport for New South Wales. Um, so that's essentially how we deal with, with any crossing of any road.
So, so, so for Maitland roadside, where we need a scout hall there, the road that's gonna cross, have we done, started any consultation there with Transport New South Wales or are we, where are we up to with that?
Uh, and I, I think the, the question to probably clarify for councillor Olsen is, do council and the traffic committee make the decisions about crossings on state roads? As both of those roads you referred to are state roads.
Yes.
And so will that come to us or will that just go to Transport for New South Wales to make a determination on, on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so in short, the answer to that question is Transport for New South Wales is the d- determining authority on that.
Yeah, because I might have a concern about the Maitland Road one where it's only a hundred metres from a crossing, an existing crossing and I don't wanna lose a crossing where that crossing is. I just don't know what they're gonna do along there. Is, is it, is it a safety issue with this, this path going all over town and across roads, so. Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, we'll put the, um, the item, all those in favour. Uh, it's unanimous councillor Moores, yep, yep, unanimous. Um. Moving on to WI seventy nine, uh, twenty twenty two. I moved councillor Burke, seconded councillor, uh, Hill. Um, speaking on that councillor Sander.
Uh, just have a question, um, I do, I actually wanna speak on it, plus a question. Um, to the director of works firstly, um, poor thing. The works, will I commence this section of work, will that commence prior to March twenty three? We have an issue with funding, so we need to make sure that that happens, so we don't lose our funding.
The director.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks councillor Sander. Um, at the time the report was written, we were about to enter into a meeting with Transport for New South Wales. And seeking clarifications on the duration of the works they require to do before we get access to that, uh, lane that they've approved us to use. Um, so at this stage, I don't have an exact timeframe. But in my experience, I would suggest that we will be very, very lucky if anything was completed before the end of our deadline. But in, in relation to that, we are getting a letter from Transport for New South Wales confirming. That they're taking responsibility for the delay in the project. We'll pass that on to the funding body to see how, uh, if, if we can get some special. Uh, consideration in relation to our timeframe.
Yeah, thank you for that because I, um, the, the, um, community of Brankston and Greata will be very disappointed if that stops halfway through. Thank you.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, just a question on that first point. There it says, Transport New South Wales has given approval to utilise traffic lanes on the highway. Is, is that mean they're gonna put a barrier between the walkway and the road? Or we're just gonna be walking on, using the side of the road?
Director.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks councillor Olson. Um, so Transport for New South Wales have conducted a speed review in the area. They're reducing the speed down to, uh, I think from eighty to sixty. Um, then, then there's a standard guideline for the separation of vehicles from pedestrians on that shared pathway. And I believe. Uh, that the detail does involve a, you know, significant crash barrier between the vehicle lanes and the pedestrian lane.
How, how, how much of the roadway were you gonna use?
Director.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it do- it does vary in, in different areas as we progress from Greata to Brankston. Um, so there's probably not a typical section, but I think our minimum width for a shared pathway is two point five metres.
I meant the, how much, how much distance are we going to be using traffic lanes? Because it was supposed to, supposed to be a pathway, separate pathway from the road. Now we're gonna be using part of the road. How much of the roadway will we, these, the, will have to utilise to do this?
I think the, the question's in regards to the length, uh, rather than the width.
On the road, yeah. How, how much of the road are we gonna use?
Uh, I, look, I don't have any exact length.
Right.
Um, to respond to that, so I'd have to take that on notice. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, my question to possibly the director, um, in our, with our concerns of the. Funding end date, has council prepared any options for what could occur? If the, uh, federal government refuses to give any extension to the funding and we are left with no money to complete the project?
The director.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks councillor Hill. Um, we're obviously putting into place a number of contingencies in relation to what happens. Um, I don't have the details of all of those options at the moment, but, um, you know, we're planning for every outcome essentially. Um, and obviously lobbying as hard as we can.
Yeah.
With the people we do have, so that we can hopefully get that consideration for the extension of time.
Excellent, thank you.
And are working actively with the local federal member to, to pursue that as well. No further questions or debate. We'll, uh, put the motion, all those in favour. It's, uh, councillor Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill. Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Olson and Savell. Those against councillor Jurd. We'll declare it carried. Um. The, now, moving on to councillor reports. Uh, councillor Moore's.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I was at Ostar Mine, uh, this week for their, uh, meetings. Uh, they have, uh, donated, uh, the annual fees, uh, to the, uh, community. Aberdeare Preschool, two thousand six hundred and forty-five. Belbers Preschool, five thousand dollars. Cessnock Greater Public School, thirteen thousand two hundred. Cessnock District Netball Association, five hundred. Kitchener Public School, five thousand eight hundred and forty. Cessnock Community, Leo Club, one thousand dollars. And they did say that they would be still donating, uh, to the community, uh, going forward. Thank you.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, I would also like to give a, a brief, uh, report on the two, uh, quarry committees. Um, I'm happy to submit some, uh, documentation in writing, um, for the February meeting. But we have both the Black Hill Quarry Committee and the Butai Quarry Committee. Both of these are the, the Butai Quarry Committee is the, um, we discuss as the more active, uh, quarry in our, uh, LGA area. The, the Butai Quarry. Now that, um, is run by Daricon. And as we can all understand with our huge focus on repairing roads around the LGA. That quarry is, is seeing a huge demand in resources to be, to be shipped out. Um, earlier in the year, um, with the assistance of councillor Grine and my, uh, and myself. We pursued some more information for the operator of that quarry to, to look at increasing their allowance of truck movements to and fro, to and from the quarry. Um, because they, they've had such a large increase in their demand for material. Um, and we're hoping to progress that still. Um, I haven't had a, a follow-up as of yet myself with, um, with the quarry committee. It only meets once every, uh, six months or so. Um, but on that front, we can, we can see that there is a massive need for it. And I'm hoping that council is able to accommodate that because, you know, we're one of the people that use all that material as well. And we shouldn't be putting too many undue restrictions on. Um, in regards to rehabilitation for the areas of the quarry where that, um. That operator has already been working over the, the last period of years, they're, they are seeing successful regrowth, um, across the areas of the, of the quarry. Um, in regards to the Black Hill Quarry, uh, that quarry is, is slightly less operational. Because they've already tapped all of the, the most useful material from that quarry. Um, and they are also undergoing extensive rehabilitation, uh, works there at the quarry. Um, there are a number of many active residents from the Black Hill and Butai communities who are involved in that, um, those quarry committees. And they are always ensuring that the quarries are operating within their guidelines and, and ensuring that the environmental, um, checks are being done as required. Um, but I'll be happy to submit the minutes of those committee meetings in the February, uh, meeting. So, uh, other councillors and the com- community can, can go through those at their own leisure.
Thank you. Um, now ask, uh, councillors to move into confidential sessions. I've moved, uh, councillor Burke seconded councillor Grine. Uh, all those in favour, it's unanimous. It will ask the gallery to leave while council moves into.